Good evening, everyone. We do have someone here from the Ministerial Alliance. Would you lead us in a prayer, Mark?
Let's pray together. Our Father, in your wisdom, you have desired that we live in community and you have instituted government to help us live in community together in peace and prosperity. And Lord, I thank you for these volunteers and these who give of their time to serve. I pray that you would guide them in all of their thinking and all of their deliberating, that they would be driven by public service and truly desiring to do what will help this community be an even better place to live with the issues that are before us: homelessness, economic growth, development, all the other things. I pray for wisdom and insight, and as a believer in Christ, I ask my prayer in his name. Amen.
Amen. I thank you. I'd like to officially open the meeting of May 16th. Listor, would you lead us in a pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a public hearing. The public hearing, along with the first reading of an ordinance, allowing the rezoning of 1898 Old St. James Road from C-3 highway commercial to M-1 light manufacturing. Tom?
Yes, this is a rezoning. You probably remember this property. There's been a lot of discussion about it over the last several months about a conditional use permit for a cellphone tower that was first rejected by the city council and then brought back and approved by the city council with several conditions. One of the conditions was that the applicant seek a rezoning of the property to deal with the height of the cell tower because the property is currently zoned C-3, which is the highway commercial district, and it has a height limit that's less than what the cell tower is proposed to be. And the request is to rezone to the M-1 district, which is the light manufacturing district, which does not have a height requirement. Property is highlighted on the map, and basically in this triangle area, that's basically the lease area that's proposed to be leased by the applicant. As I said, the property is zoned C-3 highway commercial. The property was rezoned a few years ago from the heavy manufacturing district to this C-3 district to allow for this car repair business. And so this request would rezone the south, that triangle area, to the M-1. The M-1 was chosen because the M-2 allows for a lot of things that would probably, if we go back in time and rezone this area, we probably wouldn't zone it M-2, being so close to residential areas. But the M-1 is less intensive. The street view, the property is the fenced-in triangle area. So to summarize, the comprehensive plan does designate this area as being appropriate for industrial uses. It is adjacent to properties which are zoned M-2. The property is actually formally zoned M-2. The M-1 district does not have a height limit, whereas the C-3 district had a height limit of 64 feet. The tower is proposed to be 95 feet. Should also bring up, there was a few issues that came up during the planning and zoning meetings. One thing that was brought up was the size of the property. There is something in the telecommunications regulations about saying, basically, the lease area, if somebody's leasing an area, that the lease area needs to meet the minimum lot size of the district that it's in. And the C-3 district, it met that, but it didn't meet the, but the M-1 district has a 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. And so we went through the legal description, and now it includes the area for the access easement, so that gets it just over the 10,000 square feet. And then concern was brought up about whether it's not okay to have two zonings on one property. As far as I know, there isn't anything that prohibits that in our code or state statutes. We've done it on other properties. And then another issue was brought up was about whether or not the landscaping requirements would be triggered between, now part of the property is zoned M-1, and then part of the property is zoned C-3. That's a step down in zoning, but it's the same property. And I guess, first of all, that's more of a development issue. But second, I don't think we would argue that that is required in this case because it is the same property and the same applicant. The Planning and Zoning Commission did take a look at this, and they did recommend approval with a vote of seven to zero. Do you have any questions for me before we move to the public hearing?
Questions for Tom? Thank you. I'd like to officially open the public hearing. Is there anyone that owns property within 185 feet of this proposed rezoning that would like to speak for the proposed? Is there anyone that owns property within 185 feet of this proposed zoning that would like to speak against the proposed rezoning? Is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet of this proposed rezoning that would like to speak for the rezoning? Is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet of the proposed zoning that would like to speak against the proposed rezoning? Yes, sir. You listened this time, didn't you?
Appreciate that, Mayor. How are you?
I couldn't resist.
I don't blame you. How are you doing?
Good.
Good.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. I will, I'll come back. I have a handout, just with some parts of the code that I wanted to give you all. Left them in my car, but I'll bring them back in once I'm done here, if that's okay. I appreciate the opportunity of being here. I feel like I have been here half my life, the past six months. And I'm sure most of you are tired of hearing me talk. And there's a lawyer joke in there somewhere. But there's some new members here on the council, and I just wanted to have a chance to address some of the issues in this application with those new members, as well as the members who were here before. So there's one purpose behind this rezoning application as we see it. And as you know, I'm here on behalf of SBA Communications. We have a cellphone tower in Rolla. And this rezoning application is improper. And it's improper because it doesn't follow the intent of your code. It doesn't align with the purpose of your code. There's a number of factors under your code that you should consider, that the Planning and Zoning Commission should have considered. It's not clear to me that they did, but really, the purpose of rezoning under Rolla's city code, it has to align with the rest of your code. It has to align with the intent of your code. The purpose of the application has to align with the intent of your code. And there's nothing in your code that says, "Let's rezone to allow for a certain cellphone tower height." There's nothing that says that, indirectly or directly. So again, there's one purpose behind this rezoning application. You all know it. We've talked about it at length. And it's to address cellphone tower height. It's a rezoning to allow a cellphone tower builder to circumvent other parts of the conditional use code to build a certain cellphone tower height. I know some of you weren't here when this was denied back in December. It was denied, and the biggest reasons were that the applicant didn't put enough evidence before this body, didn't show enough to this body as to why we should ignore the code. That decision was reversed. There were some closed meetings. And one of the conditions is to address the height. Another one is to address the setback. The only reason I bring that up is that's why we're here. This is not just a rezoning application. It's a vote on the conditional use permit. I think everybody knows that. I just think it's important to remember. Because your rezoning code says, "Look to the purpose of the application," and that's under 42-250.2. 42-250.2 has a number of factors listed for the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider. And number one on that list is, does the rezoning application align with the intent of the code? Our position is that it just doesn't, that it cannot, really. And that the other factors under that provision of the code don't help this application either. They don't all necessarily fit, but they don't help. So there has been nothing that has changed since December that would help this application. There's been no new evidence put forth in support of this application. There's been no change in the application itself. The application is the same. But we're still looking at these conditions, one of which is to address the height. That's why we're here. We're here about cellphone tower height. And the other reason is the setback, and that's going to go to the Board of Adjustment. So these are these steps in the conditional use permit ordinance that you all voted to reverse that are still at play here in this rezoning application. So again, it's impossible to view this application in a vacuum, as just a simple rezoning application. You know, I asked the Planning and Zoning Commission, I just said, "Have you guys done this before? Is this something that's normal, or is this out of the ordinary?" And they didn't really have a good answer for me. They couldn't really point to, they couldn't really say one way or the other. I can't find anything in the code that supports something like this. Please tell me if I just haven't found it. It's a huge code, and a lot of it's new, but I haven't found support for this rezoning application in the code. And like I said, the code requires that you, the application align with the purpose of the zoning code. And, you know, aside from those requirements in 42-250.2, this application also looks a lot like something called spot zoning. That's a new term to me. I've just learned about it here in the last month or so. But spot zoning under Missouri law is unique treatment of property contrary to similar property in the general area. Unique treatment. Essentially, it's special treatment. This property is a lot like the surrounding property. We know that. It's been back and forth between manufacturing and commercial. We're going back to manufacturing so we can accommodate a cellphone tower. There's manufacturing districts around there, industrial districts around there. There's also residential. There's also a school, not nearly as close, but there's no property around there that's gotten this kind of special treatment. And there are questions that have not been addressed. The buffer zone, the lot size, you know, they might have been addressed in part, but nobody has talked about what that means for the next application that comes along, the next rezoning application. Can anybody in Rolla just split their property in half and start waiving requirements in the code and say, "No, I'm going to waive that. I'm going to waive the buffer requirements. I'm going to waive the lot zone requirements because it's my property, and that's fine." I'm just not aware of any, anything under the code or state law or anything that says a citizen can do that. And, you know, I'm happy to be educated. I just, I haven't found support for that. And it brings up another, a host of other questions, I think, about taxing districts and boundary lines. How do you assess that property? It's not even clear that you can rezone a property or a piece of land that's not a lot, or not a tract, or not a parcel. This is just a lease area. I just, I haven't seen it, and maybe you guys can point me to something that says, "We've done this before," and there's support for it. I just haven't seen it. So again, overall, I just think this application brings up a number of questions that haven't been discussed, and it serves one purpose, and it's to build a cellphone tower a certain height. It doesn't meet the criteria under that 42-250.2. And we just didn't get that discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'm hoping the city council discusses it, considers the pros and cons, and I tried to bring up these issues with the P&amp;Z, and, you know, there weren't questions or anything. I just didn't get the sense that that discussion had really been had yet. So, like I said, I appreciate the opportunity. I've talked at length about this application, and I get the sense a lot of folks just want to move on and get this thing done, and I can understand that. But I think these are important questions that not only directly address this application, but will set a precedent for how future rezoning applications, not just for other cellphone tower builders like my client, but other businesses in Rolla, will proceed under the code. So as always, I'm happy to answer any questions, and if there's authority that I'm missing, please let me know. Because like I said, it's a big code, and I haven't read it all, but I probably missed some parts. So let me know, and happy to hear from you all, any questions that I can answer.
Any questions?
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Is there anyone else that owns property outside of the 185 feet that would like to speak against the proposed rezoning? Yes, sir.
Hey, I'm Robert Hazelwonder. I'm Board Three. I live a fair bit away. I live over on Ninth Street. My objections are chiefly not about the structure itself. I'm really concerned about the school aspect. So I did some math real quick on my lunch break, and if you look at the size of the structure, it's going to be beaming RF radiation right into the school. I mean, we can talk about the science. I recognize the Telecommunications Act of 1996 forbids this body from taking that into account. But I kind of wonder if, you know, a couple of years or maybe decades down the road, we won't be seeing litigation coming against, you know, possibly the property owner, the, you know, the telecom companies, based on new findings, Listor. Like, there's definite evidence out there that indicates there is a probability that close proximity to these towers has negative effects on health, including leukemia, cancer, depression. Like, there's a really, you know, long laundry list. The science isn't definitely in yet. I just think that it's compelling enough to warrant concern. I don't know, I mean, I'll say that. There is a case, it's the case of Thomas Elkey, sorry, Thomason Elkhoy versus the Incorporated Village of Bayville, Spring Spectrum Realty, and the New York SMSA Limited Partnership. I just wanted to mention the medical facts, because it's really a kind of a compelling case study. You've got this instance where 30% of this elementary school staff have cancer of some kind or another. And they have, what, 400% higher incidence of leukemia in the children of this school than in any other school in New York. Right? That's a pretty big state. That's a significant number. And I realize that we can't make this decision based on this. I'm just saying that as a community member, I'm really concerned about the health of these children. And, I mean, I'm a dad. My kids probably won't go to that school because we're in, like, a different district or whatever. But like, I'm a dad, you know? I want these kids to be healthy and have a good, you know, a good chance growing up. I don't necessarily object to the tower. I just think this is the wrong site for it. And I realize that you probably can't take that into account in terms of your decision-making, but I would note that the attorney really pointed out a lot of things that seemed fairly important in terms of, you know, kind of our code and our city ordinances. I guess if we approve this, I can just come back and kind of be like, "Well, I'd like to open a bar on half of my property. Is that cool?" And so this would be precedent for me to do that? I don't, I'm not really, I need to talk to an attorney on that, definitely. But it sounds to me like that could be a potential outcome from this. And so I think that might be a thing that warrants consideration. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that owns property outside of 185 feet of this proposed rezoning that would like to speak against the proposed rezoning? As was mentioned, we have been at this for quite a number of months. I don't think this was an easy issue. If it was easy, it would have been solved a long time ago. But I assure you that the city has taken a very careful and methodical approach through this whole endeavor. So rest assured, we are not just pushing this along just to get it off of our plates. We just have come to that point where a decision essentially has to be made. So I will officially close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from council persons? If not, can we have the first reading?
An ordinance to approve the rezoning of 1898 Old St. James Road from the C-3 highway commercial district to M-1 light manufacturing district.
Okay, we do have a, no, he's in the house. That means he's, oh, he's in that house. Okay. Nathan, if you can hear me, do you have any questions?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head, just legal ones, I suppose.
Does that mean you're going to ask them, or?
Well, I, in order to verbalize.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
We've been done this before.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think if it's a legal question, Nathan, I do not think it's appropriate to ask it right now.
Correct. That's why I wasn't sure.
Okay.
If you can send that to us, we can forward it on to Legal and share any legal question or comments with council.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because this is only a first reading tonight. So we had the first reading. Okay, thank you. Next item is a special presentation. It regards the 25th anniversary of the Community Partnership. This is one of those issues that it's unfortunate that we have, in our case, those that have or subject to child abuse, the challenges associated with getting affordable childcare, struggling, new parents, particularly if they're quite young, and all of those things. It's very heartbreaking to see some of these issues. But at the same time, as a community, we are very, very fortunate to have certain entities that do provide a lot of extra help, a lot of extra compassionate care. And one of them is the Community Partnership. And they have been with us for 25 years and have helped an enormous amount of people. So we do want to recognize their efforts. And when I say their efforts, it's paid staff, it's volunteering, it's people that provide monetary donations, and all those sorts of things. So I do like to issue a proclamation. I will read it, and then Leanna, if you would join me up here afterwards, I can present the proclamation to you. Thank you. Whereas the Community Partnership makes significant contributions to the city of Rolla and surrounding areas by promoting awareness of needs, creating and implementing services, and partnerships to meet the needs and encouraging personal responsibilities. Whereas the Community Partnership works to better the lives of children with disabilities and their families by offering therapy, equipment loans, in-home visits, networking opportunities, and school-based programs for peer connection and physical education. Whereas the Community Partnership works to ensure early childhood care providers have the knowledge and support they need for the developmental growth of the children in their care through educational training, onsite visits, and helpful resources. The Community Partnership works to break down situational, social, and economic barriers for youth in foster care by providing life skills training, education support, and leadership opportunities as they transition into adulthood. The Community Partnership works to prevent child abuse and neglect within home visits, designed to help foster nurturing relationships and positive parenting practices that lead to healthy and successful children. The Community Partnership works to support pregnant and parenting youth with the tools and resources they need to thrive, including one-on-one mentoring, parenting skills, education support, and family-based social events. The Community Partnership works to reduce infant sleep-related deaths by assisting area hospitals and educating parents about safe sleep practices and providing safe sleep cribs for families who cannot otherwise afford them. Now therefore, I, Louis Magdis, the Fourth Mayor of the City of Rolla, do hereby proclaim May 25th, 2022, as the Community Partnership Day. In the city of Rolla, I may call upon all citizens and civic organizations to join me in this observance of their 25th anniversary and service to the community.
Yay!
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Butts, City Council. We're really excited, and I know many of you are familiar with our organization, including Mr. Butts, having been a long-term board member of our organization. We thank you so much. I just have a really short presentation, some pictures to show you kind of what we do. We're so proud to have served Rolla for now 25 years. So, the Community Partnership began in 1997 with a determination to identify and supply needed services to children, youth, and families in mid-Missouri. We started in a single county, that would be Phelps, with a single employee and a single contract. Our budget that year, $75,000. Throughout the years, we addressed the needs of teen parents, foster youth, children with disabilities, childcare providers, young children at risk, and much, much more, as the mayor aptly spoke. We've partnered with numerous funders and generous donors to bring services to those who need them the most. And we're proud to see the impact that we have when we see the thriving lives and hopeful faces all around us. After 25 years, we've grown to encompass 12 counties in mid-Missouri, operating 12 programs with 26 employees, and our budget in 2022, $1.3 million. A lot has changed since 1997, and yet so much is still the same. We look around and we see needs all around us, and our mission remains the same: to identify the needs and find ways to meet them. We've learned that our mission is best accomplished together when we partner with other service organizations, private businesses, and state and local governments. That is when we create a community where everyone can thrive. As we look to the next 25 years, our hope is to expand our vision, strengthen our connections, and continue to create a framework of hope for children, youth, and families. And we thank you all for your support, and this means a lot to us. So we hope you'll join us on May the 25th as we celebrate 25 years. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no old business schedule for this evening. We have two items on the new business. The first one is a motion to approve the street and parking lot closures for Rolla's Summer Fest.
Thank you. Having your packet, the listing of streets and dates for closures for streets and parking lots. There's also a flyer in the packet. Nick Barick is here tonight, and I'll let him explain the event. He can do it a lot better than I can.
This is our 28th annual Summer Fest. I hope to see you all there. It starts June 3rd at about 5 o'clock, just outside the doors here, and it goes on all day Saturday. And if any of one of you are getting to know, wanting to get to know some of the little kids around town, we're looking for barrel train drivers on Saturday. So if you want to have a barrel train, let me know. Any questions? Okay.
Who's put the order in for good weather?
That's up to Nick.
That's Nick's job. If there's no questions, is there a motion to approve the closures?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, by Megan, second by Matt. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Second item is a motion to authorize a negotiation of a contract with Archer Elgin for sewer collection redundancy project.
Yes, sir. We staff sent out requests for qualifications to consultants for some work at our wastewater facilities, particularly the, we're wanting to build a redundant collections system or transportation system for the High Point pump station. We have a single line that comes out of the interstate, it's in excess of 30 years old, and we think it prudent to have a second way to get into town from that pump station. and we think it prudent to have a second way to get into town from that pump station that serves the entire High Point area, including Loves and the soon-to-be quick trip. I think that's what's going in there. We follow state guidelines on this election process, so it'll qualify for ARPA reimbursement for design. We looked at three firms and decided that Archer Elgin fit the requirements for our project the best. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to add a little bit to this. Couple of months ago, in concert with the Ralla Regional Economic Development Commission, we formed a bit of an ad hoc group to take a look at what our economic development opportunities are. We have, for quite a number of years now, realized that our ability to have sufficient developed land, shovel-ready land, buildings, and the latter are all rather limited, and that makes economic development a little bit challenging. So the group has been looking at what that means in terms of our existing infrastructure being land, such as High Point, and also what else is in the city limits and on the periphery of the city limits that could be made available over the course of years for economic development. One of the projects when we looked at High Point was, in fact, as Steve mentioned, that the sewer line that comes from High Point, what would be south under the interstate and then west down to the main collection system to the treatment plant, is 30 years old, and there's one line there. God forbid that something happens to that line. We are going to put our major employers in quite a predicament. So although this did not necessarily contribute as much as some of the other projects to future economic development, we do feel we have a responsibility to take care of those that we have at this moment. So that's the backstory with why this project is being looked at. We are only asking for approval to select the engineer at this point in time, in which case then we would negotiate a contract. Those funds would be paid from existing city funds. Any actual project is going to have to be funded some other way down the road. But first things first, the idea is to position ourselves so that if the state has some sort of grant money, we already have a study to put in front of them and say, send us the check. So with that, any questions for me or Steve? If not, is there a motion to approve the negotiation of a contract with Archer Elgin?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All signify by saying no. Hey, Steve, before you leave, for the benefit of the new council, can you, because this is not the first time we're going to be talking about RFPs versus RFQs. Can you talk about state statute on when you go to a bid, when you do an RFP, when you do an RFQ? Because I think that's important for people to know.
Professional services for engineering, land surveying, architecture. The state is pretty clear that you follow certain criteria in selecting a consultant, and that selection should be based on qualifications. In the write-up, I gave the specific four qualifications that are laid out in state statute to consider, when you consider the qualification statements of an engineering firm or other professional services firm.
Okay.
That's about the skinny.
I just, yeah, I just want to make the point that sometimes we will be asking for approval without actually going to bid, and there's a reason for that. Thank you. Claims and fiscal transactions, we do not have any tonight. Citizen communication, is there anyone that'd like to speak to City Council? Mr. Wans?
Thank you, Dale Wans. Thanks, Lester, for being sensitive to my being overtime last week, or like two weeks ago. I'm not sure exactly what to say tonight. I have concerns, I've had concerns about the mission for some time. Apparently, there's no code for it. So if there's no code for it, apparently it's unregulated. How do you regulate something that you have no code for? And I'm assuming the council feels that the zoning will correct that. I'm assuming, don't know. Still have a concern that regardless of what the zoning is, there's still going to be homelessness. I don't think you can build a shelter large enough for, what'd they say, there's 200 or so homeless people in Ralla. I'm concerned that, and maybe there's nothing to be done, I don't know, but they're camping out various places. I hear it all the time. I went to the post office tonight, and the lady says, "I'm afraid to go out on the back parking lot." Get to my car. We don't park next to the building, we park a block or two away. They sleep in the, I mean, and if you rezone and have a homeless shelter or soup kitchen, or whatever you call it. Right now, we have something that nobody can identify. We don't know what it is, okay? So zoning, you're still going to have an issue with homelessness. I want to make clear, I'm not opposed to helping the poor. I am opposed to helping the poor when it affects our city like it has done over the last few years. Even a college student leaving town says, you know, "It's really gotten worse in the last six months or so." I'm not sure what the answer is. Well, I got my own theory on that. But when you have a group of people that feels it's their obligation to aid the poor, however many they are, wherever they come from, I don't have a problem feeding the poor, taking care of our own. I do have a problem when they're bussing them in, bringing them in. From what I understand, with the Lincoln Prison, if they're the only place to go, they take them to Ralla. So why do they come to Ralla? So regardless of what we do with the zoning, there's still going to be a homeless situation, homeless problem. So how we address that, I'm not sure. But I do have concern. As we mentioned last two weeks ago, we're having a town hall meeting Wednesday night. We certainly would invite you to come. We don't necessarily ask, want you to be put on the spot. We won't ask you questions, we won't want you involved, but we'd like to at least invite you. At least you know what the citizens are thinking and the citizens concerned. I talked to a local grocery person. Someone called me the other night, and they said, "People are walking out with meat, walking out with liquor." I says, "Are you sure about that?" So next morning, I go and I talk to the manager. Sure enough, he doesn't know for sure how much they've lost, but he assured me he would let me know at the end of this month of their loss. He's got people walking out, he knows that they're stealing his food. He knows, especially the liquor. So just by rezoning for whatever reclassified is, we still have a problem. And I find it amazing that we've allowed the mission to be unregulated for so long. We can't go back, but I hope that we go forward and create a new zoning that will help the citizens of Ralla. I mean, I hear, the other day, I had students tell me they wouldn't rent downtown. They just wouldn't, didn't feel safe there. So we need to somehow create a sense where citizens are safe and feel proud of their city. So we'd love to have you at our town hall meeting and hear what the citizens have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak to Council? I had a statement for the section of comments of the good or the order regarding this issue in these meetings, but it might be more appropriate to say it now rather than in a few minutes. There's a difference, I want to manage expectations, I guess is what I'm trying to say here. And that is homelessness anywhere is a very complex issue. And if anybody could have solved it, and certainly the billions of dollars that we've spent in this country to solve it, it would have been solved by now. From the city's government perspective, there are things that we can do, things that we can influence, and things we can't do at all. And I would tell you that there's probably very, very little in the category of what we can do. Maybe there's some help and some influence, but it really is beyond the scope of city government, I think, to solve homelessness. The other thing I would say is regarding the mission. The draft ordinance that has been developed and is now in the process of being refined by all of you in planning and zoning is really not an ordinance that I would say is anti-mission. It's not intended to favor the mission, it's not intended to regulate the mission out of business. That's not to say that we didn't look at how they're operating as to learn from that, to put in the ordinance, but the ordinance is really addressed to the future, and that would be when there's another soup kitchen, another facility that may or may not open. To Dale's point, we don't really have anything well-defined now, and that makes it very, very complicated. Regarding the citizens' meeting this week by a citizens' group and the mission, I believe is also looking to have an open house. I publicly stated numerous times that it really is time for our community to have a public discussion. You know, it's one thing to tell people like me when you're at the post office or at Walmart or somebody else, somewhere else, but it really is time to have an open discussion. And I think there are separate issues. The homeless issue and the mission are related, but they're too separate and distinct. And I hope that these discussions are in fact had, and I hope these meetings are well-intended. I would also hope that at the end of these meetings, there is some consensus opinions that are formed, because the next opportunity will be the public hearings by planning and zoning and the public hearings by this body, the City Council. And it would be good to have that kind of input that would come from a citizens' discussion as part of that process. Neither John nor I will attend either of these meetings, and there's a reason for that. It's certainly not that we don't care, but the city is the one that's actually filed the application to P&amp;Z for a change in this zoning that relates to soup kitchens, transitory living, emergency shelters, overnight shelters, and everything else in between there. And because the city is the actual applicant, we want to be sure that the public does not see us as favoring one side or another. It's our intention to be neutral on it and present the facts and the options and point out any potential consequences. So those are the reasons that neither of us will actually be attending. Any other citizen comments? Next section is mayor or city council comments. I guess I'm going to start with a kind of statement on this one as well. The city has a number of boards and commissions, and each serve a very vital purpose in the governing, operating, and planning for our city. Some boards are more judicial in nature, such as the Board of Adjustment. Some are geared to future planning and quality of life and land use, such as the Planning and Zoning Commission. And some have a role in overseeing the actual operation of a city function, for example, the Police Personnel Board. I'm grateful to those that serve, and I take these appointments very seriously. I also do not take your support for granted. Essentially, I own the performance, good or bad, of these appointees. I look to potential candidates, I interview them, I look at their experience, I look at their tangible and intangible skills, I look to see their objective thinking and independent thinking, not someone that's going to listen to the last person that they spoke to. I do not take into consideration a person's religious beliefs, nor do I take into consideration their political leanings. And they're not friends of the mayor either. Are there any questions before we proceed by council on that process that I'm using? Okay. Mayor, City Council comments. With your consent, I would like to appoint Jody Everly for Board of Adjustment. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we approve.
Second, Mr. Florence, Ward Three.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Let's do hand raising. The ayes first, ayes. Yeah, put your hands down. We're going to hash this out tonight, trust me. Go ahead.
I just want to say, I've worked with Jody the last, I guess, two and a half, three years. And also, I just remember her when her son was playing soccer with my son. And Jody's always been fair-minded. She's a person who dives deep, she's intellectual, and so I have always noticed that she's been having an open mind. She doesn't come in with her, everybody has their bias, their opinion of what they want to do. She also listens to both sides of the story and both sides of the issue. And to me, she fairly takes in consideration both sides. Also, she's retired, and so she uses her time as retired to dive deep into the issue as opposed to skim the surface. So that's why I'm strongly in support of her, and I hope that you guys will really consider allowing her to serve in this capacity.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just a minute. It wasn't that long ago that this body sat here and voted to make Jody Everly our mayor pro temp. We sat here and watched as she led a meeting. I feel like her work has been, she's an unbiased person who can take the time to listen to all points of view. I am concerned a little bit that some of these appointments are becoming political to some degree. That's concerning to me. I would hope that the citizens that live in Ward Three know that I will listen to all sides when they vote for me. They're not concerned whether I'm a Republican or a Democrat, or in the middle, or off to the side, but that I make common sense decisions. And I think that's an important part of these boards. We have several vacancies. I know the mayor has alluded to the number of boards, but we have a ton of vacancies that need to be filled. And if we keep pushing applicants or nominations away, who the heck wants to serve on a board? If you're coming in front of this group, you're on television, the community is listening, and we say no. I feel like it's important today to start moving forward with some of these boards and saying yes to Jody Everly, who did work hard on our council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd also like to say that I have a great respect for Jody, and even though we didn't always vote the same on matters, I still respect her thought patterns and the way she did vote. So I hope that we support her as well.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor of the appointment, signify by raising your hands. You've got those. Did you get Nathan's, one way or another? Not yet. All opposed to the appointment, signify by raising your hand? Nathan, can you hear me? Oh, is that a no?
He said no.
Yeah, I chatted in. Sorry. As a no.
Yeah, so record that as a no.
That's a tie.
The tie.
And I don't know that the, I don't know if I'll have you. It's an approval, it's not.
I don't know.
It doesn't require. Exactly.
I think it's unfortunate that it's come to this, but I'm going to vote for the appointment. Next one item is an appointment of Jacob Roder to the Board of Adjustment to fill the second vacancy.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thanks for the approval. The next one would be to appoint Rob Kessinger for the Council Audit Finance Committee.
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Last, or next second last, is appointment of Matt Fridley to the council's audit finance committee.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And also, Mr. Florence has an appointment to the council audit finance committee. Is there a nomination?
I'll make a motion. I second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you for that. And I'd like to broadly thank anybody that serves on boards and commissions. There's no salary, there is a tremendous amount of time commitment that these folks put in, so I do want to thank them. Comments to the good of the order? I do have one. There was somebody that asked me to read something tonight who could not be here. And it's Ms. Judy Jobson, and this is for our Parks Department of Floyd. "I'm writing to give kudos to the Rolla Parks Department. Typically, when I leave my home on an errand, I go north on Rolla Street and past the Rolla City Cemetery. No matter what time of year, its maintenance is beyond reproach. I just want to recognize the Parks Department for a job well done. Thank you for caring and the respect that you show." So please extend that to all of your staff, Floyd. Any other comments for the good of the order?
Yeah, two comments. The first one is the Rolla Optimists Club will be participating in the Rolla Route 66 Summer Fest. June 6th, we'll be having a dunking booth. We like to thank the participation we've had from the people in the community. We've had celebrity dunkies before, and we're hopeful that the mayor will be a donkey again, and so.
I am a donkey.
He's one of our high earners. For some reason or another, people want to dunk the mayor, so, you know, we're looking forward to that.
That list gets longer, Lister. I'm going to raise a hell of a lot of money.
Second thing, I also want to acknowledge that the Roll Optimists Club had a volleyball program. We hadn't had it for two or three years, and City Councilman Megan Johnson chaired that and worked with the university volleyball team and provided free service for the youth, the young ladies in our community, so we want to acknowledge that as well. Also, FELF Focus, who will be writing an article about that now, it'll be in the paper pretty soon, and we're excited about that, so that's what I want to say.
Thank you.
Any other comments for the good of the order?
I have a comment. As we're celebrating the 25-year anniversary of the community partnership, I wanted to just share with those out there that there is a representative from the Community Partnership at the Phelps County Dream Center's food giveaway on Wednesdays. It's the first Wednesday of every month, and oftentimes, probably every other month, maybe she comes, her name is Jamie. So if you want to talk to them, if you're there, or if anybody visits the food pantry, there is a representative of the Community Partnership there on Wednesdays.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? If not, we have two items scheduled for closed session per revised Missouri statute 610 dealing with real estate and personnel. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion made in second. Roll call vote.
May Berry?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Renan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Florence?
Yay.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fridley?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.